Again, I'd like to state that the planning commission hearing and meetings are open to the public in person and via Microsoft Teams streaming application. Note that all the meetings or hearing information can be found on the Town of Monument's website. The planning commissioner's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendation to the Board of Trustees about land use matters in the Town of Monument, and each commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review. This includes no prejudgments on the projects. Should a commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now. Thank you. Additionally, for those who are attending tonight's public hearing meeting via Microsoft Teams, if you wish to speak during the public portion, please ensure that you utilize the option to raise your hand and have your computer microphone ready to turn on. You may speak directly to the commission so that your concerns are heard and to ensure a timely and fair hearing. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on that same subject. Thank you. This concludes the introduction. We will begin the first items for tonight's agenda. The, let's see. First thing that we have is the Pledge of Allegiance. Correct? If we could all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, staff, roll call, please.
I know he's not. Will Homie?
Out.
Trahio?
Yes, here.
Oars?
Here.
Light? Absent. Sternicall?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Egley?
Here.
And then we have two alternates listed, so Peck?
Here.
And Collins? Absent. Oh. Did you want to? You want to come and draw?
Great job. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the previous minutes. Now, earlier we had discussed the approval of the amendments. What we'd like to do is amend the minutes, but we'd like to do that in a section of reports, communication, and announcement if the staff concurs.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, presentations for this evening, we have two. First one's going to be Rivera Electric LLC Final PUD Plan and also the Quick Quack, Quick Quack Car Wash Final PUD. Up first will be the Rivera Electric LLC Final PUD. With that, I push to staff, please.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Rivera Electric is located on the east side of Beaconlight Road approximately 0.4 miles north of 8th Street. Wolf Business Park filing number two, Free Zone Sketch PUD and preliminary final plot was approved by the Board of Trustees on September 5, 2017. Wolf Business Park filing number two is designated for industrial warehouses, use and outdoor storage. The comprehensive plan identifies the subject area as light industrial. The Town of Monument will provide water services and Monument Sanitation District will provide wastewater services for all development within Wolf Business Park. Existing surrounding uses includes peak equipment, redline, pipeline, and ABC landscaping. Rivera Electric is 7,000 square foot building with offices and warehousing. The proposed development meets all circulation, parking, lighting, and landscape requirements to the Town of Monument's municipal code. Outdoor storage area will be screened from view with a six-foot chain link fence with slats. The site will be accessed off of Wolf Court. The warehouse office and outdoor storage facility is projected to generate 30 total vehicle trips on the average weekday with 16 employee vehicle trips a day and 14 vehicle trips being generated by service and delivery trucks. Rivera Electric conforms to the town's comprehensive plan by meets opportunity LU, which is a land use G. Rivera Electric preliminary final PUD plan will accommodate highway-oriented uses designated on the future land use map on the screen. The uses proposed in Rivera Electric will utilize a shared access off of Beaconlight Road consistent with this policy. It also conforms to economy opportunity C. The warehouse office and outdoor storage yard will further the objective of promoting Monument as an activity hub for Tri-Lakes region. And staff recommends approval of Rivera Electric LLC preliminary final PUD plan based on the findings that the proposed preliminary final PUD plan is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in Section 1803-460D of the Town of Monument's Land Development Code. And Chuck Crum is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have regarding Rivera Electric.
This is Dave Warren.
Oh, sorry. I thought Chuck was here.
Yeah. Just wanted to mention a couple things, but the site's about a little more than an acre. It's not the Wolf Business Park filing number two. There are at least two more developed sites in this. There's several more undeveloped lots there, and so this will be in addition to those existing ones. There's a, you know, I'm sure you saw the plan. There's landscaping, drainage is addressed in the drainage report, and the rest of the, I think the presentation was pretty complete, but if there's any questions, I'm here to help.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we're going to go ahead and open it up to the public. And with the public, is there anybody online that has any questions?
There is no one online.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody in the room has any questions regarding? None. At this time, we close public comment. Commissioners, open the floor to you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Yes, ma'am.
I have a few things. Did I miss it, or did you put a lighting plan in here? Was it in there?
It's a wall light?
There's no pole lights, there's wall lights on the building.
Wall lights? Okay.
And this is an electrical contractor's building, but they don't really need a lot of light at night. Everybody goes home, and so the building is lit, but nothing else.
So you're not going to have those really bright LED lights that you can see from the moon?
No, just not that way.
Yes, like that. Good. And the fence, and this may be more for staff than you. We allow chain link with slats here?
Yes, for industrial.
Do you want to visit that? Because with the windstorms, it's probably not the best fencing option. It would be nice to see wood or something a little bit more resistant to wind, not even the wood is, but. And then I have another question for staff. In the public improvement agreement, what's going to be, is anything going to be worked out with Beaconlight Road?
So the El Paso County is actually going to be completing improvements to Beaconlight Road.
Okay.
The initial construction drawings associated with those improvements are anticipated to be completed this year, and then those improvements would be completed by the end of next year is what's anticipated. So for that reason, we're not asking any applicants to do improvements to Beaconlight because it would just be undone by the county.
Okay. And there's no road fund or contribution towards street improvements because of the traffic it generates?
So they would have to pay a road impact fee, just like anybody else within the town at the time of building permit. That is a requirement, but they aren't at the threshold where they have to contribute towards any additional improvements, their traffic is very, very low. The applicant can provide additional information, but I believe this one didn't even have to do a traffic study because it was so low.
That's right.
Yeah.
The number of employees, we calculated the number of trips, and it was so low that didn't really meet the threshold. It was deemed necessary to do a traffic impact study.
Right. It's really more about the weight. I'm assuming you have heavy equipment?
It's not, there's no, there's no big semis or anything like that. They would be, you know, pickup trucks and box trucks, and that's about, that's the limit of what it would be using the site.
Okay, okay. And my last thing is, I ride my bike down that road pretty much every day, and it's turning into a nice industrial park. And I saw in your drawings that you do have some stone in your facade, and since that was part of his application, he has to do that, right? I mean, that's not a, we may do this, he will be required?
Anything that's on the site plan that has been proposed will be required.
Okay.
Yep.
Also, you know, I think very interesting architecturally, the buildings they propose, and they will buy by the plans.
Yeah. Okay. That's it. Thanks.
Commissioner Oars? Since the commissioner asked the question, I've got a question to staff. Debbie, is the fencing that they're proposing consistent with the other fencing that we've had installed in that particular?
Yes. Yep.
That's all I've got.
Thank you very much, sir. At this time, I would like to identify if the board would like, or the commission would like to submit a recommendation as far as approval for the individual presentation.
She'll put it up on the screen. I can't remember all that. Commissioner Oars? I recommend that staff recommends approval of Rivera Electric LLC preliminary final PUD plan based on the findings that the proposed preliminary final PUD plan is in conformance with the review and approval criteria for preliminary final PUD plan as outlined in Section 18.03.460P of the Town of Monument's Land Development Code 2021.
I'll second that. Green.
Are you ready for a call?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Trahio?
Yes.
Oars?
Yes.
Sternicall?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
The second agenda item that we have on docket, it will be the Quick Quack Car Wash Final PUD. With that, I defer back to staff for the presentation.
Yes, good evening. And Russ Nelson with Lone Star Builders is here tonight for questions after the presentation. Quick Quack Car Wash is located within the Monument Ridge subdivision at the corner of Baptist Road and Struthers Road. Monument Ridge Preliminary PUD Plan was approved by the Board of Trustees on January 16, 2007. The approved preliminary PUD allowed for a 30-acre mixed-use development with a variety of retail, hotel, office, and residential land uses. Tri-Vue Metro District will provide both water and wastewater services for all development within Monument Ridge, and they have provided a will-serv letter. Existing surrounding uses include the Chase Bank, Monument Ridge Apartments, and Field Field Inn. Quick Quack is a 3,846 square foot automatic car wash with vacuum stalls, which is allowed used within Monument Ridge. It will be 18 stacking spaces for the car wash, which meets code standards. There will be internal sidewalk system that will connect to the main sidewalk along Struthers Road. The proposed development meets all circulation, parking, lighting, and landscape requirements of the Town of Monument's Municipal Code and Monument Ridge's design guidelines. The primary access is Struthers Road via the shared driveway located at the southern portion of the property line. The secondary emergency access, which is not required, is a private, its access is located along a private road at the eastern property line. A transportation memo was generated for this project, and it conducted by LSC, which will generate 775 total vehicle trips on the average weekday, which equates to 385 vehicle trips per day. And staff reviewed the final PUD application and analyzed with the applicable criteria from code section 1803-460D of the Town of Monument's Land Development Code and found all criteria is met. Therefore, staff recommends approval of Quick Quack Car Wash Final PUD. As I said, Russ is here tonight with Lone Star Builders to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Debbie.
Yes.
With that, I will open it up to public comments. First off, do we have anybody online? Or? Yep.
I can speak too for a minute if you want?
Yeah, please do, if you'd like to. Yes, sir.
Hi, thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, my name is Russ Nelson with Lone Star Builders. I just wanted to mention just some of the background of Quick Quack. We do a lot of projects, but one of our big, the big things we do is with Quick Quack, we build our car washes. And there's a reason why they're one of the fastest growing car washes in the country. They're just a great company. We'd love to partner with them. Some of the reasons that they're very well managed, cleanliness is a high priority for them. The employees are all in white shirts and ties when you go onsite. I'm sure some of you have been to some of the sites just south of here. They do ongoing charities. In fact, when we do the grand opening, they'll actually identify a family right here in Monument and do a day of fundraising for that family in need, and then they will present the funds that they raised to that family, and sometimes that's $5,000 to $10,000. So they do a lot of ongoing charities with high school teams, things like that. It's really, it's a company that we like to partner with. It's the kind of company you want in your community. And thank you to Debbie, we work with staff a lot. We've worked with a developer at Ellsworth extensively to get this site just the way we want it. It's my job and my team's job to make this decision as easy as possible for you, and we do that by meeting or exceeding all of the requirements and expectations from staff, developers, even neighbors. So I believe we have a fantastic site plan now. It works very well. We're in a great location. I'm actually surprised there aren't other car washes near there. This is probably farther away from another car wash than probably any of our other car washes of the near 200s. So we're really excited to be there. We fit well in that, in that commercial area on that corner, and we're very excited to have another car wash here in this area. We love this area. So yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'd love the opportunity to respond if there's any comments from public or email. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, public comment. Anybody online?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. And here inside the room, we have some public comments here. Ma'am, if you'd go ahead and step up to the podium, and if you would, state your name and your address, and also place that on the, is the notebook there for you?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, my name is Kristi Musser, 1734 Lazy Cat Lane in Monument. We're the other car wash owners. We own Freedom Express Car Wash down the road. And I'm not here to, you know, not say don't have Quick Quack coming, because we believe this is a free country, and, you know, we definitely want that. But my concern with Quick Quack, you know, when we built our car wash and we came to the city of Monument, there were very, I think, pretty strict guidelines with keeping up the monument, the structure, you know, fox run veterinary, the new apartments that are going in by Quick Quack, the dental office that I go to right there. Everyone has a very kind of rustic mountain feel, and Quick Quack is not bringing that to it. So, you know, we're not here to say don't build Quick Quack, but it's a very basic building with block, bright yellow and green. There's absolutely nothing rustic or mountainy about it. I live here, I live right off Baptist, and what I don't want to see on that corner is North Academy, you know? So I love what we're doing downtown with the beautification and kind of keeping it that small-town mountain feel, but, you know, I'm here, you know, with Whataburger coming in down the street and with Classic Building, all those homes, the homes are still kind of keeping with that rustic mountain monument feel. And what I'm afraid of is we're going to be letting these larger corporations, Quick Quack is a huge corporation, they're all over the United States, and we really, I think that we really need to, as a city, keep that, that feel. You know, we have to keep, you know, we were held to certain guidelines, and same with the Walmart Shopping Center, they have to have timber, they have to have rock, you know, steel, and so do all the other buildings coming in. And so that's what I would just ask, that you guys would look at their design and ask that they would, you know, create and have the same culture that we're expected to as business owners here. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Any other public comments? No other public comment, thank you. At this time, I close the public comment, and I would like to go ahead and open it up to the commissioners for any questions to the gentlemen, as well as the public if necessary, please.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know a lot about car washes. Is the water recycled?
Yes, we, that's a great question. So we have a sophisticated reclaim system we put into all of our car washes, where we reclaim most of the water. You know, if you wash your car in your driveway, you'll use, on average, more than 100 gallons, 120 gallons of water, where our net usage is about 28 gallons per car, where a shower is about 17 gallons. So it's roughly more than a shower per car. So, yeah, we do do that. And could I address the public comment?
Certainly, please.
So I appreciate that, Kristi, thank you. And we actually, that was a lot of our work with Ed Ellsworth. They have very strict design guidelines, architectural guidelines, and we are using some of our other color schemes to match the architectural guidelines in that development. So it won't be our typical bright green and yellow, it'll be more earth tones, and it'll match the architectures there according to their guidelines.
Gentlemen, please.
Hi, this is Commissioner Aigle. I had a couple of questions regarding traffic flow and signage. You show the, I'll call it the bailout lane that bails out on the eastern road that, right now, I think on Google Maps, it's identified as Reagan Heights. But that's really just for an exit right there after the kiosk, after the sale kiosk, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. We call that our escape lane.
Right.
That's for the, you know, I was going through one the other day, and someone left their bike on their bike rack, or there's something left in the bed of a truck, or a truck's, maybe it's, you know, there's a couple a day that'll use that, but that's it. It's not a, usually they'll go through the tunnel, and then about half will leave through those main accesses to the south, and the other half will go to the vacuums and then leave through those access.
My concern is, though, that customers that are going to use the wash coming from the east, coming past Walgreens and McDonald's, making that turn, may not know that the entry point is really off that private road, and they may try to come into that bailout lane. So what type of signage will you have there to prevent that from happening?
Yeah, that's a great, great comment and a great concern. We can put up do not enter signs, exit only. Yeah, we can do whatever's needed. We certainly don't want anybody coming in through that lane. Obviously, we need them to go check in, so we will be managing that very closely.
I know that the kiosks will have, they'll probably have some type of, like a railroad crossing, they'll have the drop down in front of it. Is it possible to put something there to prevent the people that aren't, that are using that as the entry point to keep them from entering there without, you know, seeing the sign that says do not enter?
Yeah, that could be a possibility. We would check with fire on that, make sure that's not a concern. But we're certainly flexible, and we're, we're open to doing anything necessary there that would.
And I think the same concern I have is with the true exit onto that little private drive right there is, again, customers may not see that they have to pull up another 40 feet to enter into that triple lane of stacking, and they may try to come into your exit area where the people that have already entered, exited the tunnel, and the drying stations are going to be leaving at that point. So some type of sign is there as well that would advise the customers, they need to go a little bit further to the east to enter into the wash. Those are my two concerns that I have with the traffic flow.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be managing that closely, and we can put up do not enter signs and exit only signs. We certainly want everybody to enter through the, that east-south access.
Right. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, just a reminder, if you wanted to add something like that, you would need to add that as a condition of approval at the time of motion.
Commissioner Oars? I had the same concern that the commissioner had. If you could just clearly somewhere indicate, like when folks are coming from Walgreens down, that the sign very clearly points and tells them that the entrance is beyond that, that particular road, we just, exit that we just talked about. Likewise, when they come from Struthers Road, the sign, there's a sign that very clearly states where the entrance is, other than just a do not enter at those points. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
And you're saying we should put a condition on there?
Yes, you would want to, if that's something that you feel is important for approving this item in order to meet the criteria, which I think you could, because one of the criteria has to do with circulation, then you would add that as a condition of approval. I would ask that because we're doing this in the hearing, you leave it somewhat open-ended, and that you allow Debbie and I to work with the applicant as to the specific wording of the do not enter and all of the various warnings.
Quick question then, ma'am. Would that be in the case, would those conditions, as you work that with the member or the applicant, that's what we would see in that summary, inside the summary, before that goes up to the Board of Trustees, correct?
Yeah, so what you would do today is you would add a condition, and maybe that condition would read that the applicant will work with the planning staff to establish the location and the wording of do not enter and other cautionary signage, and then give the specific location. So on the emergency exit lane, located on the east side of the site, something like that, and then that would be passed along to the board. And then at the board meeting, if we're able to work things out, then we could tweak that condition, and we could identify to the board that we've already determined what that sign is just going to be, where it's located, and amend our recommended condition based upon that. If it hasn't been worked out, then the same type of wording would be passed along, and then we wouldn't authorize any kind of a building permit for them until that had been completed.
Thank you. Please.
So Colin speaking. So on that second exit that we're talking about, how would someone get in there and use your vacuums without getting a car wash?
I believe in this, in this case, they would, they would go through the tunnel to get that, to get access to the vacuums.
So you couldn't vacuum your car before you washed it? You'd have to follow that?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Gentlemen? Good. All right, got a couple of questions for you here. As the public had made to comment about or regarding the individual design for the fill of Monument and with the color schemes that are available, are there other options other than the standard Quick Quack? As, as the public had made to comment about or regarding the individual design for the, the fill of monument and with the color schemes that are available, are there other options other than the standard quick quack, light, bright yellow that we see on Interquest, that we see on Northgate, that we see on several different locations that you have nationally? Are there, what are those color schemes? And you're, you mentioned earth tones. But I guess again, that, that stamp of quick quack being inside monument, this, this, what we assume is, you know, our mountain town feel. Uh, obviously will be a bright, different setting for what obviously the public would like to see. Um, what are those plans? When you say earth tones, define that a little bit more for us.
Yeah. So they are, they're not the, won't be as bright as the McDonald's arch right there, but it'll be a more muted desert tones. So uh, um, I should have, do you happen to have a copy of the color elevations?
Oh, please. Yes, ma'am.
That was one thing the developer requested. We initially proposed our, our national color brand. Um, and they came back and said, we need to have your color scheme fit the development. And so we had to get approval from quick quack, of course. Uh, but they have several different color schemes they can use. So we've used this in um, some of our locations in Utah and some other locations.
It, but, but it is a consideration that you're looking at now, obviously, to ensure that it still fits within the scheme here in color, here in monument.
That is the only color scheme that was approved by the developer is the muted desert color tones. So we will not be using the standard quick quack colors.
Do, do you by chance, Debbie, have the standard quick quack, quick quack colors?
There's.
This is the muted, correct?
Yes, this is, this is the color elevations that will be going in. So it's not the bright yellow and it's not the green at all. It's actually the brown.
Okay.
So this, this, what you're seeing here is the, is the color scheme that the developer and, and city has approved.
Okay.
And this is specifically included within their plan set. So it's already a condition.
Correct. Okay, no, perfect. If we could go back, Debbie, please, to that intersection, the actual drawing with the actual traffic there. One of my major concerns here, one is lighting. Uh, the night skies, the laws, things along that lines. Right now, as you travel down, I travel about four fifteen, leave right on Baptist, take a left there on Struthers. And as I go down, the main thing I see that is igniting that light sky is, was mild dental. Brighter than beans.
Yeah.
The night sky is a concern simply because of right there. As you go by that, uh, you're going to see that's, I'd say take a dry passer at nine o'clock tonight and you'll see what I'm talking about. But obviously with the night skies, the lighting at night, you do already consider the lighting to mitigate as much lighting as possible due to the fact that we're going to have residential apartment buildings, uh, condominiums on that upper portion of Glen Eagle right above you.
Correct, yeah. And it's a great concern. Um, what we've done to address that, we actually hear that concern um, quite often. So the lighting on site is shielded, so it does not leave the perimeter of the lot.
Okay.
Um, that also turns off automatically every night, other than security lighting. Which is very insignificant compared to the, the onsite lighting during operation. We'll be open seven to seven during uh, that's our normal operating hours. In the summer, we're open seven AM to nine PM.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair, do you mind if I just take this opportunity to provide some additional information to the Planning Commission?
Please, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I did want to let the Planning Commission know that as part of our standard review of any final PUD or, or site plan, uh, we do review lighting and what I pulled up here is a photometric plan. So we take a look at the level of light to ensure that it meets our, our dark sky. So regardless of if it's uh, PUD or if it's conventional zoning, staff is completing that review even before it gets to the Planning Commission.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And then when we do our inspection prior to CO, we ensure that the lights that they've installed match the ones that were included. Um, and if they were to switch them out at any point and they didn't come to us, then they would be in violation. They would have to remove those lights and put in lights that are in compliance with our, our dark sky and our lighting plan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Last question for you. Now, uh, Debbie, sorry, one more time, go back to the parking or the whole schematic there that shows uh, Chase Bank McDonald parking lot. Yes, ma'am.
The vicinity map, I believe.
This is it. So as I look at this, I got Chase to the north. I got McDonald's off to the northeast or northeast there. I've got dental right across to your east, Struthers off to the left. Obviously the area located to the south is still open. My question is, is that corner of the lot to the southeast where Chase is, you have, you know, just that intersection. Right now, there's a stop sign. We've got, I don't know how many units are opening up there uh, with those apartment buildings. We've got commercial resident, commercial retail businesses that will be opening up there. Is, how are we going to mitigate that traffic in that area right now? I mean, already just for people that come down Baptist, uh, go to Walgreens, hit McDonald's. Now you have a car wash in there, plus retail, plus all these houses in there. I mean, right now, it's, it's already congested. Uh, reason why, obviously every night I have to go get the uh, the uh, McFlurries for the kids. But I already see that that individual area is jam packed. So my concern is exactly that. Now we're throwing a car wash in there. How are we going to mitigate that in the future? And I don't look for an answer now, but just make sure we, with those signages, even as a condition, we have to look at that wider to ensure that not only safety, but it is, it's going to be tightened there.
But the traffic study did state that with this car wash being here, in there, with every other use that's in there, it's that level of service C, which is an acceptable level of service. And we have the Struthers Road phased median that was put in last year as well for the apartment complex. Due to that was the road requirements, improvements for the apartment complex. So everything's running smoothly according to the traffic study that was prepared. Um, it was, and every traffic study mimics the traffic study that was prepared for every other project. So every, this project included, includes the McDonald's and includes the apartment complex, includes all those trips as well as the car wash. And it did not show that it was going to fail at that intersection.
Very well.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, open it up to the commissioners to identify, or any comments within the commissioners' concerns. Yes, sir. Uh, request a motion at this time with conditions if applicable.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Aigle. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of quick quack car wash final PUD based on the findings that the proposed final PDU plan is in conformance with the review and approval criteria for a final PDU plan as outlined in section eighteen point zero three point four six zero point D of the Town of Monument's Land Development Code twenty twenty one with the condition that adequate and appropriate signage is placed at the bailout lane and the exit lane to prevent um, inappropriate entry uh, into those locations uh, by uh, potential customers.
What point do we ask for an amendment to his, to his condition? At what point in this process?
So you could, so I mean, you could uh, identify that you have an issue and see if he wants to rescind his motion or the motion would have to, or when you, if you're going to second it, you could say, I second with an amendment.
I second with amendment. And the amendment be that the, that the staff work with the applicant to see that that proper signage is placed in the plan for development. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
That's acceptable to me.
I'm sorry, I'm just typing it up real quick before I do roll call. Okay. Trish Hill?
Yes.
Ours?
Yes.
Light, oh, light's on here. Uh, Zernico?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Chairman, I can't restrain myself at this point to make the comment that now not only can people get in that development clean teeth, but they can get a clean car.
I was waiting for you, man. At this point, uh, thank you very much, sir. Welcome to Monument. Uh, we'd like to go ahead and move on to public comments for non-agenda items for the town planning items. Public comments for non-agenda town planning items. Do we have any public comments?
There is no one online.
No one online and the, we are moving on. At this point, we're going to go ahead and go to reports, communications and announcements. What I would request at this time is that we uh, take a few minutes to put our amendments in for the uh, bullet points for the approval for the previous minutes uh, that we discussed at the beginning of the meeting. So from the commissioners, a couple of items that we identified uh, inside the minutes was the last commission meeting, we, we identified several different items that were located to the south of Falcon Crest Commerce Center, specifically the multifamily residential and the residential housing located to the south side of uh, of the Falcon Commerce Center. With that, a couple of things were missing in the minutes. Uh, Commissioner Ohr had mentioned some things regarding uh, multifamily versus residential. Uh, those weren't in the actual minutes going up to the planning or to the Board of Trustees. With the Board of Trustees information, the concern is without the narrative identifying why the Planning Commission made the comments as to um, Commissioner Aigle and obviously myself saying no. Uh, we felt that obviously it opens up the blinded end of, they don't understand why we said what we said or why we gave the argument of no in relation to the condition. So what we'd like to do within the minutes is amend the minutes by stating that first off, there were two things in there. One was the amendments. Two, it's was that the Falcon Commerce Center Phase Two Preliminary PUD was do, we wanted to amend it for multifamily due to, in the minutes, it mentioned egress. But the content is much more, meaning egress was based off of the congestion of traffic that was located on I-25 with semi-traffic on that exit route. That wouldn't allow most of that residential, whether residential or multifamily residential to egress properly if in case there was an emergency such as a forest fire. Well, we've known that are going to happen. They will always happen here simply because we're this close to the national forest. Uh, that was a concern that it wasn't clearly articulated for the, for the Board of Trustees as to why we put the condition in on that southern half of Falcon Commerce Center. The second point was the Air Force Academy and obviously the congestion of aircraft and flying of those aircraft inside there by placing the commercial or not commercial, by placing the residential or multifamily residential in those locations, the amount of uh, traffic, aerial traffic that would be in that area and how that would impact uh, you know, the longevity of aircraft in that area. Uh, that wasn't addressed in there either. Uh, those were the two main points that we extrapolated from or that were missing from the minutes uh, that we would like to definitely have consideration going in. And I leave that open to the board if there were any other points that were missed prior to going up to the Board of Trustees uh, for consideration as to why we had such a debate on that, that topic.
Could you make the font a little bit bigger? I can't see it.
About seventy-six or eighty.
Yes.
Thank you.
But lack of two access points in case of emergency evacuation due to congestion on the I-25 Baptist corridor or on the I-25 Baptist intersection. It, it's not necessarily access, but it's again, the congestion that you're going to have on that, just on that individual point. That's.
Emergency evacuation as well as.
As, as, as access, yes, ma'am. But again, the, the whole part that we're seeing now, I think, is that when you look at that pilot, when you look at that Valerho that are both right there, I mean, we're already seeing the remnants of that traffic. Yes, yeah, exactly. And soon to be quick trip. Uh, it's not only the semis, it's also going to be just the transits, transitory. I learned that word. It's going to be the transitory uh, personnel that are moving through for vacation right now. So.
Uh, I think this is Commissioner Rarner. Commissioner Oars, I think in addition to that, we, we talked about how just without regard to the exit to I-25, the congestion within that complex of of vehicles, eighteen wheelers and the other vehicles. And then when we get the, the brewing distillery distribution, that there is going to be so much congestion in there without regard to emergency access, but just the mere fact that that is primarily a commercial industrial center and that's not really compatible with residential. Am I not correct?
That's not perfect. I think you're absolutely right.
I mean, I had, and we did discuss that.
In quite detail.
Quite detail, more detail than we wanted, but I did.
Oh, good.
That.
Concerning regarding the use to use. And can you put in existing and future traffic congestion within the complex or within the development?
Within the Falcon Commerce Center.
Oh, I'm going to have that as another point.
Oh, you are? I'm sorry.
Well, no, I wasn't going to.
How many, it, yeah, because we talked, when we done the, the distribution center, he stated, how many trucks? What was its?
I want to say it's forty, forty or fifty trips a day.
Yeah.
Well, he did, he did also say that it's going to happen like early on.
Yeah.
Well, we still have them. We got the UPS center there. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff in that area.
But even if it happens early on, residents go to work.
Yeah.
Early on, it's still an issue in there and then you must get out of there.
Yeah.
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 It's uh, it's, may I make another comment? I I think it's important, staff, no, we don't have any objection. In fact, you have every right when we make a condition to tell the Board of Trustees why you might disagree with our condition. So that's not what we're concerned about. But what we're concerned about is the detail that you're able to give with regard to why you think we're making inappropriate condition. It's just as important that that kind of detail about why we as the citizens serving on the Planning Commission are saying. are saying that our conditions should be approved by the Board of Trustees.
Mm-hmm.
And that didn't happen here because the minutes apparently were insufficient for Debbie to, to pick up maybe some of the detail. I don't know what that was. I do know that my past experience on the board, it is common practice that minutes be brief. And I agree with that with the exception that when we make a condition, brevity doesn't necessarily communicate what this commission has talked about to make that condition. So I think there's exceptions as to where brevity no longer applies and detail becomes important. So when Debbie writes a package, she can get the full, because for her to remember every comment that's made up here on any discussion with all the meetings that we have and all the different projects. Uh, I know Debbie's really good, but I don't think she's real whispery, okay?
When I
So I, I, I just think it's important that, uh, I personally don't think we're trying to break the stat. We just want to make sure because on this, you know, we put a lot of emphasis on the comprehensive plan. And if you go down through what needs to be looked at when you're doing a preliminary P U D, the last item on there is, does it conform to comprehensive plan? And when you look at that complex, that development, all the businesses that are in there, the residential does not fit in, in any manner to all of that. And I think in the minutes, I mean, in the discussion, we talked about the comprehensive plan. Did we not or did we? And I think that's important that, that the this, this, uh, bullet statement you put there that, that we are, that we relied on the comprehensive plan to make our position. In fact, it would be, it would be, uh, it would be, hold on. I'll get you the would be. Uh, eighteen point oh three point four five point D, although we didn't cite that in the minutes. Okay. That night. Item number thirteen, the plan is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and it's really not consistent.
Yep.
It's just a general statement from me, but I think it's important because I, I appreciate being on this commission. I appreciate the staff. I just feel like we got shortchanged for the wrong reasons this time and nothing had to do as much with the, the lack of detailed minutes as, as anything else.
And I certainly don't disagree with anything that you just said. Um, it's, I mean, if you guys would like additional detail added in, I think that we can facilitate that in a better way. So as soon as the draft minutes are completed, you'll be seeing them coming forward to you. And then you can respond as soon as you get that. Open it up, take a look. If you want changes, respond to us sooner rather than later so that we can make the changes on time for it to be included in the board packet. I think that's great. I think that's, that's the type of, you know, communication and partnership that we should have. So that's wonderful.
Well, let me see. Uh, brevity with regards to the ones that we recommend approval, we don't make any conditions. I think brevity's fine.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
But when we make the condition, or there's a couple of no votes. And then in the past, we've, we've indicated if somebody votes no, that they, after they vote no, that they give the reason they vote no.
Yeah.
So that goes in correctly.
One other thing that you brought up, um, was inconsistency with the comp plan and that maybe being a reason for removing it. Um, so maybe the next time around, if something similar comes up, if you're wanting to remove uses or, you know, add conditions, if you can tie it back to the review criteria, I think that that would be helpful. So kind of like with Quick Quack, we were able to tie it to review criteria because one of the criteria has to do with circulation. So if we're in, we're reviewing a proposal and it requires comprehensive plan, consistency with the comprehensive plan, then you could add a condition if you think that there's a little tweak that has to happen. So just like when you're making a motion to deny, if you're making a motion with conditions, same concept. That'll help.
So what I'm hearing you say, like I just said, we would have been, it would have been better if we would have put eighteen point oh three, but item thirteen that it didn't. And then
Or just said, said, I'm making a motion for approval, but I'm making that motion for approval with the following condition because I think it's necessary in order to meet this specific criteria. And I don't think that it'll be in compliance without something like that. And, you know, I could have done a much better job of the last hearing. It was, I'd been here like three days. Um, but I could have done a better job at the last hearing, kind of, uh, making sure that that happened and, um, helping in those motions and in those discussions. So I will do a better job moving forward. Um, I definitely take the blame for why the last time it didn't get conveyed in a way that, um, staff was easily able to pass it along to the board.
I have a
Please.
quick and, and you, maybe you were going to say this. Um, when I read flight patterns, I think noise and I believe the situation here is this is in the emergency landing zone of a strip. And although it's not used, you don't, from a planning standpoint, build residential in the emergency landing zone.
It, and it's potential, you know, they can use it. It's still, yeah, but it, it's based off of noise. So anytime there is something, I mean, I live off a Baptist up there in Palmetory Point and one of the issues is, you know, when they start flying at seven o'clock in the morning, I'm already up, but I already, hey, yeah, they're, they're flying. They're looking good today.
Yeah.
But that's a concern. Now, do I, do I call in? I'm sure somebody does. They always do.
So for noise, there's certain thresholds where, um, we can very easily as a staff add conditions or say it's, it's inappropriate for certain use types. And that's sixty-five decibels. I'm sure you're familiar with it. Sixty-five decibels. Um, and we have communicated with the Air Force and we verified that, um, no portion currently within the limits of, of Monument includes sixty-five decibels. So there's no portion where we, we as a staff would be able to say this is incompatible due to noise. Now, you could outline that you have concerns and it still could be part of your consideration. Um, but we would not recommend denying something based purely upon that because there's not, there's not really a law to back you up. Because a sixty-five decibel is what's key.
Beyond that.
Yeah.
There's an old, be- because I've been through this before with them. They don't use it, uh, but there is a runway and the crash zone goes outside of the Academy's border into where they were going to build the multifamily residential.
So we send every single application that's in proximity to the base. Um, we send it to them for review. So we're relying on them as the, the current operators.
I would too.
Yeah, we're still, we're going to pass this along, but I want to, I want to make sure that everyone understands like the, the difference. It could be a discussion topic. It can be something that you consider, but that alone wouldn't be justification to deny an application. Now, all of the other things that you've got listed, concerns with, you know, used to use compatibility, concerns with the comprehensive plan, things like that. Um, that would be adequate justification to deny something, but the, the flight.
But, but I would, I would definitely have that commander's or that general's letter on there simply because in this case, we're talking about mitigating fire and safety of lives.
Have it on file.
Exactly. So that individual comment.
To be included in the staff packet from now on.
Love that to be in there because again,
You can do that.
If they approved it and now it goes to the Board of Trustees and they say, yep, even though they're mitigating it with on behalf of the Air Force, even though they're mitigating on behalf of Chief Bauer that's saying, yeah, we can put residential for that. Good. We got, we've done everything as a planning commission to say, hey, Board of Trustees, well, you know, you wiped out that whole entire village. We told you this was a concern. Now look what happened.
On record. Yeah, that's, that's really not a bad idea. I feel like anytime you're dealing with, um, any kind of airport, whether it's,
Yes, ma'am.
Air Force Academy or the city, you really should have that kind of stuff included.
And, and I think because that gives, I, I understand that you have other entities that are going to make those decisions. There's no question. I think everybody here truly understands that.
Yep.
But again, the concern is something that, okay, we're looking at it from a different aspect, not only because now we're looking at it on behalf of the citizens and their safety. We don't know that it's ever going to happen. We don't, we didn't know Waldo Canyon Fire was going to happen.
Right.
But these are things that again, if we're not looking forward, some, something can happen.
Yeah, if it's in proximity to the base where we need to send it to them, you'll start seeing their responses in the packet.
Yes, ma'am.
Forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
Could I get a little clarity? Cause I wasn't here last month. What exactly happened? Was this, was there a condition or, uh, someone sent to the board and the board didn't like it?
No. So what happened is there were a couple of additional conditions of approval that were added at the hearing. One was regarding the removal of gas stations as a permitted use and the other one was removing multifamily as a permitted use. Um, the staff packet to the Board of Trustees, the staff memo includes the recommendations from the Planning Commission, but then the staff recommendations are different than what the Planning Commission recommendations are.
So one other question is, um, and I don't know if this conversation has been ongoing. I've missed it, but, uh, there is, I believe, a little bit of dissonance between the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees on the comprehensive plan density, kind of maybe vision for the town. Um, and I know that a couple of months ago, we had talked about trying to schedule a conversation with the board. Has that happened? Have we had that conversation? So I don't know.
No.
Are you guys wanting to do like a, a work session with them or?
However, it would be, however it would be structured, but I think that it, it just seems like there's a little bit of a disconnect between what the Planning Commission is, uh, looking for, uh, and what the Board of Trustees is approving or is looking at in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. We can, we can certainly do that. What I, um, what I've done in the past with those types of meetings is I, is I've asked for specific topics and questions from the Planning Commission. So we can prepare an agenda so that it's a more organized meeting that's more efficient for everyone. So if you guys can send me over your specific topics, then I'll see about scheduling something with them.
I'd like to respond to him though. Uh, the Board of Trustees has done a very good job of supporting this Planning Commission. When they know why we have put a condition on something. In fact, uh, Debbie, if I remember correctly, it's been within the last year that we, we voted no unanimously on a project. And the, the Board of Trustees kicked it back for the developer to work with the Planning Commission and the staff to make appropriate amendments to get a positive from us. So the trust, a- and that's why this issue has become so important to me and a couple of other folks is if the Board of Trustees here see why we put a condition on, they, they have better reason to maybe agree with us with regard to comprehensive plan issues and such than to say, well, there's, because as you all know, there's an applicant out there telling them why they shouldn't listen to our, you, you understand what I'm saying? But the Board of Trustees has, I don't, I don't have any problem with us having a workshop with Board of Trustees. I think it's good, but they have been very supportive. When we said no on that project, they kicked it back. That, that was the end of it and that was within the last year and we got it all worked out and, and it went forward.
It was village at Jackson Creek.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And we tried to get the applicant to not even go to the board, just to come back to the Planning Commission and then go to the board, but they wanted to take their changes with the board. And we knew what their board was going to say, but they bounced it back to the P C, to the Planning Commission. Yeah.
The other point I'd make, uh,
If we could maybe
On your bullets?
If we could maybe take a, a vote on that at some point so that I know if we have consensus for that meeting or, or not. Or not, it doesn't have to be an official, but you know, raise of hands or something. On, uh, Oh, this? No. So what we're doing right here is, um, because there's not, there's not time for you to approve the minutes before the next board hearing because it's on the eighteenth. Um, I'm going to print this out and provide it to the Board of Trustees at that next hearing.
On your bullet point, Falcon Commerce Center Phase Two, the Planning Commission had a desire to amend the multifamily use due to concerns related to residential quality of life. And we did talk about quality of life. And all those issues down there impact quality of life, but we talked about quality of life. Am I not correct?
Yes.
Commissioners. So if you could put that stem on there.
Just added now. I just added it now.
Yeah, I'm going to try to shut up now.
Last one for Myself, looking at regarding access to the development lacking two access points gave good concerns regarding additional traffic congestion on I-25 and Baptist parentheses, UPS, quick and, and name the actual truck stops, name the distribution center, name the actual Falcon Commerce Center and all the residential or commercial residential that will be down there. I mean, they, they see it only as, well, this is what it is. You know, look at it for what it is because again, all of these entities, as soon as we put those all on there, it's going to be, oh, yeah, I forgot about them. I forgot about UPS until you said it. Uh, because I was thinking just strictly about the distribution and I was thinking about the residential, but as soon as you said UPS, I was like, oh crap, I forgot all about them. So I just marked that inside there and I think we should be good.
Okay.
Um, my last comment, unless there's any other is simply this, for the Planning Commission, when something like this happens, for the record, I mean, is the planning commissioners afforded the opportunity to appear in front of the Board of Trustee meeting and address the issues that might not be sufficiently related in any minutes or in any content associated with what we said.
Absolutely. Now, what we would want to be careful of is that we don't have so many of you there that it's considered a meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, but if you wanted to appoint one specific person to attend, you absolutely could do that.
Perfect. That's, yeah, just want to make sure that that's an open invitation on behalf of the Planning Commissioners to go ahead and, you know, concede and actually say, okay, yeah, we need to go and explain or in this case, you're giving us the opportunity to provide that additional information for the minutes, which I think is great. Thank you. Um, you know, if that wasn't available, just want to make sure that other doorway is open to address those concerns.
It certainly is. We would just ask you to coordinate with one another's.
Yes, ma'am.
One another, not one another's. Yeah. To meet dinner.
Perfect. At this point, uh, reports, communication, announcements, planning staff, do we got anything new and exciting?
I, I do have, I wanted to talk about a couple of things. Um, so we've already discussed the difference in conditions related specifically to the Falcon Commerce Center. Um, but you might've noticed that the, there were some other conditions that got added in. So I wanted to explain what those additional conditions are and then explain, because you're going to see them coming before the Planning Commission as well in the future. Um, so what we've noticed is that, um, we haven't really, we haven't solidified how park fees or park land is going to be taken care of in the town previously. Um, so previously, if a developer said that they wanted to give us certain park land, it was just, okay, sure. But it, the board might not have been necessarily, um, aware that they were taking over this land and they might not have been aware that they were choosing to take that land in place of fees. Um, so that's, that's kind of a big deal because that means that the town, uh, for one thing, could be getting additional land that they really have no interest in owning and maintaining and that maybe isn't suitable for a park. Um, and then it also takes away from the town's ability to, uh, purchase areas that would be good parkland or do improvements to the existing facilities. So with all of our applications moving forward, we're going to be focusing on park and then we're going to ensure that prior to it getting to the Planning Commission and the Board of, of Trustees, we are having internal communications with our Parks Department to determine if they're, if they're proposing to give us land, do we want this? Can it be improved? And then working with the developer to outline what improvements will be made to that area, um, as part of that overall agreement. Or if it's inappropriate and we don't think that we want the land that they're trying to give us, establishing what those fees are going to be. So that's one of the things that you're going to see moving forward. Um, another thing that you're going to see moving forward, uh, in most instances is going to be conditions regarding traffic. Um, I think you guys are all very aware of, uh, traffic and I think you guys are all very aware of traffic and congestion. You ask a lot of questions about it, but if we don't place specific conditions of approval related to necessary improvements on the approvals, then if we get a really bad applicant and we haven't put those conditions, we run into a situation where the town would really have no teeth to, to tell them, you have to do these improvements or you have to put money in escrow to contribute towards those improvements. So you'll see that moving forward as well.
Quick question on that, Nina. Is it then identified by stages in relation to the production of the product? Okay, so you're talking by stages.
Yeah.
Not necessarily in this case, since 2007, Quick Quack was approved. But again, now with the, the growth of the actual entity that's in that area, 2007, that's great. But now just look at how this has grown. I just want to make sure that those stages are addressed in each portion of that development.
It will be. And so with, with different application types, you're going to see the conditions worded differently as well. So if we're just at a sketch plan stage and it's been identified based upon the traffic study that we think improvements are going to be required at X, Y, and Z location or Y being whatever it might be, it'll be fairly general and it'll identify that, you know, at the final plat stage, they will do X, Y, and Z or at the site plan, X, Y, and Z to ensure that we're, we're putting them on notice. You're going to have to do something. And then if they come in for those subsequent applications, they already know that they're on the hook for that and we've already agreed to that. Is that what you're asking?
Exactly.
Okay. And then if, if there are any other items that come up where we, we know that we have to put conditions because it's not something that's purely within our regulations, like the lighting, then you'll see additional conditions. So just wanted to let you know about that. And then at the next Planning Commission hearing, you will see a proposed amendment to the code. That proposed amendment to the code is being reviewed. It's been reviewed by the HBA. It's being sent out to members of the public as well, but it would be to make our process a little bit more streamlined. So right now we require for, if somebody wants to do a PUD, we require preliminary PUD and a final PUD. For plat, we require preliminary plat and final plat. So it would actually be combining those together so that it's just two actions. So that's a lot more burden on the applicant upfront to provide us additional detail. But then when you're, you're issuing the approvals, you have more information than you currently do. Because I'm sure you've all looked at the criteria and they all kind of stack up on top of each other. So you're being asked to make a decision on comprehensive plan compliance, maybe without not all of the details that you need. So you'll be seeing that.
So I have a question about that. Would you, then you'll still have a sketch plan, a PUD, you'll still have a sketch plan, but you'll have preliminary PUD slash plat?
It'll, it'll just be, so what would happen if it gets approved? You'll have a sketch plan, so not sketch PUD, just sketch plan. Then you'll have two options from there. So you're either going to have conventional zoning or you would have just PUD. So it's not going to be called preliminary or final. It's just PUD. It's a one application for your zoning. So that'll, that'll become the zoning. The PUD will become the zoning and then you will have one single plat as well. So instead of preliminary plat and final plat, it'll just be plat. So if you look at the steps, you'll have your sketch plan, you'll have your zoning, which is either conventional or PUD and then your plat instead of having multiple steps.
So in a, in a PUD, if they are wanting to break it up, like our applicant last time, break it up and sell it, you will also, we'll call it a final PUD, but it will also contain the final comments of the final plat to sell property.
It won't because PUDs, with a PUD currently, you cannot convey land. And with a PUD in the future, you also couldn't convey land. So it's not, it's only, it's a zoning mechanism. It's not a subdivision action.
Those are the subdivision.
Yeah.
Some of those PUDs we have over the past few months being divided into pieces.
It may have had that appearance because they were only doing a final PUD for one of the lots, but that is just zoning. So you cannot legally convey land based upon a PUD. You have to actually plat it.
Right. I understand that. Look backwards. Can you? I don't understand my own question. If you have a, a large PUD, where if you have several properties that are individual properties and they're all some PUD, then you're just saying each one will go through a separate process.
Or they would come in for one big one. It's up to the applicant on what they want to do.
Come in for a big one if you can't convey parcel of land of PUD.
They still, they still could, they still could. So they could come in for, okay, I'm going to just do this. So they could come in for, let's say, this is their whole entire PUD area that they're wanting to do. And they could show that there's individual lots within that overall PUD. They could do that. It depends on how much detail they're, they are wanting to. Yep. And then they would, and then they would come in and they would do a plat for each one of those lots or for the entire subdivision before they could convey the land legally. Yeah.
Commissioner Rovers, so just for clarity and for the, like the Fountain Commerce, you know, you said as an example for this discussion. We, last meeting, we had to approve a preliminary PUD. And then what would have followed and what's going to follow, I guess, is a final PUD. But now, once that amendment has come.
If it's proved, yeah.
Proved, we'll just have one PUD. Which means then that in a preliminary PUD, just as we made the exception to get rid of residential, that, and gas stations, we can do that in a preliminary PUD. Can't do it in the final. But when it's combined, we can still take those uses out even though they were in the sketch.
You sure can.
Because the sketch plan said that it was multifamily.
Yep.
But even though the sketch plan was approved, when it comes to the PUD, before we approved that PUD, if we want to take something out, have valid reason for taking something out, that's when we've got to do it.
Yep.
Because once it's, once it's left in.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it. Right. Because it doesn't have to do with uses at the plat.
That's important for us is to win, when we can and when we can't do something. And the PUD is, is the place where if we feel something shouldn't be in because of inconsistencies or something, that's where we need to say, okay, we want to put a condition in there. We need to state why we need to put that condition in there. Let the Board of Trustees make the decision.
You got it.
Okay. Trying to keep everybody straight and myself.
So the other thing that we said we were going to provide you an update on is you had asked about Tribe View and the intersection. So Tribe View is in communications with El Paso County regarding the improvements. The town is not a part of those specific discussions, but we understand that they're, they're looking at working it out. So that's the only update we can give you for right now, but if we hear more, then we'll tell you.
Can you keep the heat on them? And the reason I say, subsequent to this last meeting that we had, I live in the area. So as I was coming out of King Supers, I'm a couple cars back. There's cars lined up, a couple cars back and there's a couple cars over here wanting to make the left-hand turn. Somebody pulled out to the right. There's cars coming in the left lane of Jackson Creek and nothing in the right lane. So that car that pulled out, lo and behold, what did one of those cars that was in the left lane do? Pulled over into the right lane. So now we had this car coming out and those car, now they didn't hit. But what I'm saying, that is one dangerous intersection and somebody is going to get seriously hurt sometime. And we've been complaining about this for several years now.
Yeah. We have asked about it as well. You could try also complaining directly to Tribe View if you would like to do so. That's your right as a citizen.
I might do that. Thank you.
Squeaky wheels. That's, that's all that we have. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, the industrial, Debbie was just reminding me to let you guys know that the industrial standards were approved.
Good. Perfect. Any?
There is a, there was a proposal from trustee Lakind for some additional changes and that'll be on the 18th. It's just regarding some of the uses, limited uses being re-categorized as permitted, as conditional uses, whereas right now they're permitted uses. He also had a request to remove the ability for the director to vary the semi-parking. So that'll be on the 18th. So if that gets approved, we'll let you guys know. Not to. So he said not to. That's, it was. Bury the parking.
Perfect. Thank you very much, ma'am. At this time, are there any other comments, concerns here within the Planning Commission meeting? And at this time, it is 7:22. We will adjourn the Planning Commission meeting of today and look forward to next month. Thank you very much.